Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We'll call this just people like present.
Here.
Clerk Palavich here. Treasurer Ellery Summers here. Trustee Kroll.
Excuse me.
Trustee Reiner.
Here.
Supervisor Skibby.
President. At this point, is the adoption of the agenda, are there any additions, corrections, substitutions?
Yes, I'd like to add the tax insert.
Tax insert.
Just to see if anyone, if the board wishes to put an insert in with tax bills.
Okay, we will add that under new business, it will be the new seven and we'll push department reports to eight. Is there anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda as stated. We have a motion to approve the amended agenda, is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the amended agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Approved. This is the first opportunity for public comment. If there's any public comment in person, please stand at the podium and state your name to the record. If you are online, please use the bottom task bar to raise your hand or shoot a text message first.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having us on the agenda. Nate has been very helpful in that. My name is Marcus Sapannak. I'm the president of the Wyndham Garden Estates Homeowners Association. And got some big, big expenses coming up on our behalf regarding the water and sewer system.
It's.
Yeah. I guess I was leading over a little bit, thank you. And appreciate Nate's help in trying to get a long-term resolution that I think is actually aligns that township's interest in ours much better going forward. So the proposal you have in front of us, we're agreeing to the total cost of up to $106,000, which in relative terms, we've got about 39 impacted units or properties that will be involved. So quite a bit of money for each of our, of our unit owners in this regard. So appreciate your support. We're having votes on this. We have to have a special assessment to do this internally in terms of funding it. And your vote today to support changing the agreement going forward will help us to get the support we need to get the funds to do this the easy way. So I'm here if you have any questions and I appreciate your time and appreciate your service as a township. So been on a board before, it's, it's, it's an underpaid job, let's just say that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Seeing online. We will move forward to payment of the bills. Is there a motion to make payment of the bills?
I'm moved.
Okay, we have a motion to make payment of the bills, is there support? I'll support it. Further discussion?
You had a question.
No, I, I'm just a, it was a no big deal.
Okay.
No further discussion, roll call.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Pauli.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Moving forward to the minutes of September 27th, 2021, which was a regularly scheduled meeting. Are there any corrections to the minutes provided? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to go through the minutes as they stand. Yes, trustee.
I have a question for the clerk. In the fire department update, the last sentence is clerk shall inform the township board that fire rider slash MFR will begin to full-time effective October. Who is that?
That's James Bolanowski.
Should we have his name in there?
I think so.
I'll correct that.
Okay. So with the addition to the gentleman in particular to the fire department updates, James Bolanowski, are there any other corrections or additions to the minute says presented? Entertain a motion to approve the minutes with correction.
So move.
We have a motion on the table and support. Any further discussion? The same. Trustee Paul. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose the same. Moving forward into correspondence, we have two items from opening the county road commission, their minutes of September 26th, and then also their county road report of August 30th through September 26th. I'll entertain a motion to receive and file the correspondence.
Make that.
We have a motion on the table to receive and files, there's support.
I'll support.
It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Further discussion, it seems like the timeline for the Bagley Street Bridge is staying strong and don't see any foreseeable delays to opening a primary corridor in our entire.
So I can cross that bridge on my way to Honey Creek.
Well, or you could try there, Luke Duke. I don't know.
Supposed to be November 14.
So. So anyways, all those in favor of receiving and filing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Moving forward to new business, considering there's no old business to discuss. The first item of new business is the Wyndham Garden Estates Conveyance Agreement. In your packet, you'll see, and Tim, I guess I'll let you kind of take some, some other.
Sure, sure. The present agreement involving this subdivision provides in section five that the condominium association and its successors and assigns will be responsible for the cost of repair and maintenance, including but not limited to all labor and material costs to the sewage collection lift system, lift stations. So the amendment, the proposed amendment reverses that clause, that's the essence of this. And also provides that the condominium association, as we heard during public comment, will be doing a special assessment and paying for the present repairs. And Nathan and F and B have obtained quotes from care, pump and supply that total $104,471. So that's the anticipated costs. And so to have a little bit of a cushion, the association in this proposed agreement goes up to $106,000 in case there's small overrun. If it went above that, the township is agreeing that it would be responsible for the excess, but all indications from care, pump and supply, or that we know the precise cost. So this agreement again amends the original agreement with the township when the subdivision was formed regarding the conveyance of the water and sewer components to the township and who's responsible for what.
Are there any questions to?
What is the resolution on the table?
It's, I believe in your packet, but there's one other.
Titled First Amendment to Water and Sewer Agreement. And so I know what the subdivision association is looking for is a motion by the board to authorize the supervisor and clerk to execute this agreement. And then the association wouldn't be doing so until after they get their members likewise authorization.
So if the repairs end up being 110,000, the township's going to pay the additional six.
Correct.
I will say that does concern me because we have another water projects where it's come back where we need another 10, 15,000.
Yeah, well, it's a potential $4,000 increase, but nonetheless noted. Would be concerned for any project of Catherine. And F and B, we've discussed this, gone back through, we had updated quotes presented, which was an uptick from the original quote. And by all, I know that Miss Winnie heard participate. That's seemed pretty solid at that point.
I have some other questions too, that I just want to. My recollection is when we reviewed this previously was that they, the reason we've had so many calls and repair issues at the lift stations on Wyndham Gardens was because the developer had not created that system at the level that we would want and we have in our system. Is that, is that a fair assessment or?
I would say to, to the conveyance, when it did take place, it met that standard. But the conveyance obviously put all costs back onto the association. The issues are the years of use and the years that the township maintained and actually had and failure to maintain at an appropriate level. Being the inclusion of the HOA and taking more of a responsible act, not that it was a negative, but we ended up having a lot of hands in a cookie jar that made the electrical panels, the pumps difficult and nonlinear in their pattern. So since F and B's been operating our system, some smaller changes and corrections have taken place that have curbed a vast amount of the callouts. This would be the final piece of that puzzle of the HOA agreeing to make all the deficiencies, if you will, of that system current to our standard as part of the conveyance.
Now, that's, that's for, I'm sorry.
For the station.
I'm sorry, I was.
Oh, that's okay. So when you say all of the deficiencies, but if we find more deficiencies, they're not making them whole, we are. If I understand correctly.
And that was going to be my second question was, was in other words, there's more to the system than just the pump station.
Yes.
And so what about the rest of the system?
The rest of the system already are, I mean, in the contract, it states that the existing infrastructure, I believe, is part already taken care of. The, the holdoff was the sewer lift stations themselves. And that's where all costs that were associated with those lift stations were operations and maintenance were sent directly, built directly to Wyndham Gardens.
I don't remember the history. I wasn't involved with this, but yeah, there's specific provision regarding the lift stations that required the HOA and the residents to, to bear that responsibility, unlike some other neighborhoods. So I don't know why this one and.
Well, I, 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 my belief is that it probably was because of concerns about the system itself at the time, but I don't know, I wasn't here. And, and, but all I know is that we've seen F and V go out there an awful lot. As I reviewed their reports over this last year, I've seen a lot of calls to Wyndham Gardens. And, and so I wonder if we've got other anomalies in that system that are, that are fragile that would cause us future concern.
Mr. Brocchi, would you like to take the podium?
By all means.
Mark Brocchi with operations. The reason we've been called out is because of the lift stations. We don't get called out because of enforcement, we don't get called out because of the gravity. It's the lifting issues and issues with the pumps, failure, failure for the pumps to, they get ragged up or they just have, they flat out die. So what you're doing is you're essentially installing four brand new lift stations with new controls, new, everything's new on. You're getting, you're getting the thing. The only thing you're not getting is you're not getting a new concrete can.
Other than that. Piping or whatever is.
The piping inside is still acceptable, it's still functioning. The only thing that did not work is the stuff that was inside of the can. And all that has been replaced as part of this 104,000. They've replaced, they've included everything that happens inside of the can.
What's our expected life of what we're doing?
Twenty to thirty years. That's on maintenance, I do. If you maintain it properly, then you could throw out, but then we have. Current system as it stands lasts a long time. It was put in back in the, so we've got over 20 years, I don't know.
And we would be the ones, F and B would be the ones to maintain.
We're going to maintain it as, as we do with all the rest of the stations that we've got out there in the system, yes.
And as it said, in that contract, everything outside our. It are. Already.
I just would like to know too, how competent are we in this number of 10471?
I'm very, very confident. It does replace everything internal to the can and the control box also. So you're not only in the can, you're placing contents of the can, but you're replacing the control structure. That is another reason you're called out. And we will have testers go down, you'll have motor starters, electronic parts that will stop functioning properly that cause the calls. You'll have all branded, you'll have new LCD panels, you'll have, I mean, everything's, the whole control structure is being.
Yes.
So in this new world we live in right now with inflation starting to ramp up considerably and availability of product being a problem. Is this a firm quote from Kirk?
Yes.
So in other words, if they can't get the supplies for four months or something, get them in from China or wherever they come from, that we, we aren't going to have a problem with the change in credit.
It's not a material issue right now. It's, these, these are not things that are being chips for cars or anything like that, or worse, or something sitting in a boat off Long Beach. I mean, the, the whole from what I understand, everything is available and ready to be installed.
Six to eight weeks is the quote for it. Yes.
Okay, so right off the bat, my ears triggered when I heard the word special assessment.
It's not our special assessments, an internal HOA assessment.
Okay, so we, it has nothing to do with us.
Yes.
Yeah, good question. I.
That, I.
I knew you were going to ask.
Oh, yeah.
Do not bring us.
Yeah, they're kind of a nightmare.
Trustee Pauli.
So what I'm hearing is these new lift stations are going to be right up our.
Yes.
Okay, which normally the type of work you do anyway, you've already proven that. And this is going to be a cost to Windham. And then after that cost, this is now going to become the township's water and sewer system per se that we must maintain.
Well, you currently own the system, you just don't maintain the cans. So in other view, own the system already, you just don't maintain the lift stations. But we maintain them, but we build everything directly. So it's, it's a, it's a weird relationship, one that we really don't find very often. But it, you know, technically, yeah, you do, you do own the system already. You're just having them upgraded to current standards and then you take over for the maintenance costs.
When the dust settles, we're involved. That's it.
Yes.
A couple of questions. As I read the water and sewer agreement, item number one basically says that we own it all. And then item number two, because I think we're only dealing with item five, right? All right. So item number two, is that going to have to be amended because the, the developer and the grantor is going to hold us harmless?
That was originally when it was installed.
Okay, but, but is this, is this going to be an amendment to the current agreement?
Just paragraph five, so.
So would paragraph two still apply?
No, it's, the system's been constructed. All right. As defined as underground system. So those were installed back in 95 or thereabouts. So that was the initial, the concern was the initial installation of the system.
Okay.
To require the developer to hold the township harmless at that point.
Just during the construction or installation?
So, yeah.
All right. And then.
Sorry. That's okay.
I don't think there was anything else that I, that I read. I don't remember. I don't remember nine confused me a little bit, but I guess it just has to do with the ownership of the, of the system, which was somewhat redundant from the earlier item number one. Okay, all right.
Well, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
So when I read the amendment to the agreement as well, it talks about that Wyndham will pay the township. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so who's billing, who's responsible for billing Wyndham for this?
Who's responsible for, I guess I'm.
So does F and B do an invoice?
They have the curb pump. This would be part of them taking this back to their HOA board to say, this is the full quote, not to exceed with the amended language. And then they make payment to the township based upon this quote.
Okay, we're going to pay her directly and then Wyndham will be paying us.
Making.
F and B to manage, the installation manager oversee the installation, to make sure that it is according to the quote that's provided.
Any other questions?
No, I, I saw no resolution on the, in the packet.
That's a separate item.
Yeah. You have a resolution prepared or?
That's a different, different topic. So the county resolution?
No, no, no. I'm talking about resolutions for this.
No, just.
Just making a motion.
Yes. Sorry, I misunderstood. Yep. Yeah, we just.
I make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to approve the amendment to paragraph five in the Wyndham Garden Estates contract and support. Further discussion?
Supported that.
Further discussion?
I think we covered.
Roll call, focus.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Pauli.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I have two original contracts. You won't be signing these yet until the HOA.
Okay.
Gets their okay, but I'll hand these off to Nathan perhaps.
Moving forward in the agenda, next item is the Everett Goodrich Trucking invoices.
What was this for?
These are for DBW repair sites for water breaks and digs.
Okay, because I was wondering why this wasn't going to the road commission instead of us.
Well, you could try.
Yeah, you could try that. Yeah, good luck. Nobody else has any luck over there.
No, so these are, these are just quotes that we see on a regular basis every season for any time by our water and sewer ordinance. If we disrupt the ground, our ordinance states that we put it back to original condition. So these are digs that have already taken place. And the work has probably already commenced on the vast majority of these sites. So I would entertain, yes, Laura, sorry.
What GL number are we paying these out of?
It would be five, nine, two, 100. Maintenance on system seven, five, six, zero, 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 I believe.
Maintenance.
If you're going to guess, guess right, okay.
I know. I mean, kick me in the shin and tell me if the trailer hatch. This is water department invoices, yes. Enterprise fund. I'd entertain a motion to make payment of both invoices.
I support.
And support. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Pauli.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Mr. Brocchi, you might as well make your way back up to the podium, sir.
Questions after?
No. We already.
I can tell you that those patches have weren't done. We, we are at Mercy of Goodrich whenever they can get to them, we get, we get them done. So they're, they're probably already completed there from, for digs that range anywhere from back in January through right now.
Moving forward with the F and B asset management plan, I want to bring in.
That's, that's the invoice for the asset management plan for the lift stations. All your other lift stations have never had a asset management plan. And this is, is the engineering group is preparing a, a plan to properly maintain and assure that these lift stations are kept in good operating condition. Along with that, they track what capacity is, what the run times are, the size, the volume, the pumps, all the information we need proper maintain them. This will give us a good record of where, where they sit today. And as we maintain them, we keep track of what's happening. Start to see run times increasing, you know, there's something going wrong with the station. So you can figure out when you need to attack them and get them fixed before they become a critical incident that you have to spend a lot more. So that's, that's the whole behind this is to provide a plan to properly maintain these stations.
Yes, Michelle.
Um, so this will take a little chunk out of the capital asset plan binding, but it will not completely get rid of our binding.
And Steve and I actually, when we're looking, sitting with the engineers, we expanded the amp. And I think that's still in-house at F and B to actually in.
So are we just going to get a quote from F and B?
That will be coming back.
I actually talked to, we're working on it. She's just left her company. And I happened to catch her on the way out the door at her going away party. It says, hey, what's going on with this? And she informed me that she had transferred over to somebody else who I talked to today. He's going to go back to the group that he's waiting for some information on, see if we can get that thing back up resurrected. So now it's in pressure hands and he understands that we've talked about it today. And he's going to see if he can get that thing moving forward. So unfortunately, it was last, just, just last week. So I asked, I said, what are you doing? Because I knew that it had been kind of like out there, I haven't heard anything. So we checked, checked on the progress and we're trying to figure out where it is and try to get it moved back forward again. We want to get it completed before your next audit for sure. So you've got it ready to go. And then some of the information, like I said, it's already in Silver Smith. So we've got that available to us. They're aware of that. Might take a little bit more to come up here to review some of the drawings, make sure everything matches. It gives us some good, some more good information to build a better maintenance program overall too, so.
Are there any questions?
Yes. So, so this will also check off one of the lists on our CPA relative to our asset.
Yes.
It's, it's a small portion of it, yes, but the, the overall system does not track the overall system, which is the part that we're really trying to get focused on, get completed for you for that list.
And so, and so as we, as we go into the future, will, will the asset management plan just be amended to include whatever new item we've had along and, and for whatever, is there a professional fee associated with that? Or is it just done at the time that we do the project?
There really is not much of a fee because it's a simple, what did you add? What did you add? What did you?
All right. So this just goes on to some spreadsheet.
Once, once it becomes a spreadsheet, that's a bio, that's a living document, then if you add something, it's easy. So, okay. For perfect examples, right now with Wyndham Gardens, that would be a new asset that we'd be adding all those lift stations. So you say, okay, check the lift station. Boom. You had, you had four more lift stations.
Just that simple.
Yep.
So no engineering costs associated with that or anything.
No, I've, I've done it for other municipalities where we actually have expanded stuff. So, okay, well, we added this now. You know, we added a biotripling filter to a order for order. Well, there you go. There's, there's that filter. Now, what does that consist of? Sometimes you have a lot more to add into it as opposed to things like that.
Good. Well, I'm glad to see that we're doing that because I think that that's going to be critical just for all kinds of reasons. So, all right, that answered my question. Thank you.
Any other, yes, trustee Paul.
So you mentioned they, they is your people in house.
Well, it's the engineer.
In your house.
Yes.
Okay.
There, there are actually three groups in our, in our company. There's the engineering group, the operations group that operates stuff, and there's a construction group that will actually build plants and buildings and, you know, things like that. So we have three different groups. That's why when. plants and buildings and, you know, things like that. So we have three different groups. That's why when I say the they is operations is one.
But still all F and B, that's fine. That's my question. Are there any other questions for Mr. Broci? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to move forward with the invoice for seven thousand four hundred. Okay, we have a motion. Is there support? Uh, trustee Lappin.
Yeah.
Support by trustee Lappin. Any further discussion? Sing on roll call vote please.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Plavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Moving forward to the resolution of the adopting of the twenty twenty one Alpena County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Tim, you've worked on it, so I'll let you take point.
Sure, this came from Kim Elke from Alpena County and I think it'd be best if I just read it. And since it tells the tale, this was their form, I modified it to fit your needs and get it in our normal resolution format. Whereas the Charter Township Board of Trustees recognizes the threat that natural hazards posed to people and property within Alpena County. And whereas Alpena County has prepared a multi-hazard mitigation plan, hereby known as the twenty twenty one Alpena County Hazard Mitigation Plan in accordance with the Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand. And whereas the twenty twenty one Alpena County Hazard Mitigation Plan identifies mitigation goals and actions to reduce or eliminate long-term risks to people and property in Alpena County from impacts of future hazards and disasters and whereas adoption by the Charter Township Board of Trustees of the twenty twenty one Alpena County Hazard Mitigation Plan demonstrates the township's commitment to hazard mitigation and achieving the goals outlined in the twenty twenty one Alpena County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Now therefore be it resolved that the twenty twenty one Hazard Alpena County Hazard Mitigation Plan is hereby adopted as an official plan of the Charter Township of Alpena. The content and of this document together with all maps attached to and contained herein are hereby adopted by the Charter Township of Alpena Board of Trustees as the twenty twenty one Alpena County Hazard Mitigation Plan on today's date. And my understanding that they're approaching all the municipalities.
Yeah, it seems like every municipality, they want every municipality to join under their umbrella to them to master plan.
I'll make a motion. We approve the resolution on adopting the two thousand twenty one Alpena County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
I'll support that.
A motion and support to move forward with the resolution supporting the twenty twenty one Alpena County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Further discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll.
Clerk Plavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes.
Michelle, I'll complete that and email it.
Okay, thanks.
Moving forward on the agenda is the Underfire Department, the Word is Auto Repair invoice to the tune of one thousand four hundred and sixty-two twenty-eight and twenty-eight cents. Chief, do you want to?
Morning, Mark Hanson, by chief. The Word Automotive bill that you see in front of you there, that is for the new vehicle that we received from the Department of Natural Resources, which was free to us. There were some of the things that we had to put together, new brakes and things like that, but that vehicle's in service, working fine at this point. So basically, other than the cost of repairs to get that vehicle up and going for the time being, fourteen hundred dollars for that vehicle at this point is a pretty good stroke of business. And I'm not sure on Nathan, on that bill, if the battery was on that bill for the.
It was a separate, it was a separate invoice.
Oh, it sounds replaced.
Well, yeah, but there's a, there's a separate battery for a different ambulance, I think. Is that what you're speaking?
That's what I was wondering, yeah.
There's a battery on this, but then a separate invoice for an ambulance.
Anyhow, that is the repairs to the the vehicle. That was one of those things that soon as we received the vehicle, we took it to Word of Automotive. Had those folks go through everything, make sure it was safe on the road. Glad we did. He says, lucky that you got here with the brakes because they, when they took them apart, they just fell out of the out of the, out of the hub, so anyhow, that being said, that is the bill for that vehicle repair.
Yes, trustee Polly.
What was the vehicle?
It is a two thousand and five Chevy Trailblazer. We have it sitting right out back and love to show it to you, so.
Yes.
So I see originally the, it looks like they were charging us tax.
Yeah, so I, when I stopped to pick up the invoice, I said, we're tax exempt and so it's chicken scratch clarified that.
So do they need a tax exempt form?
Probably wouldn't be a bad thing for us to drop one off. That way they they know that.
I'll have to get it from the clerk's office.
Yeah.
I'll do it and send it with the bill.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to make payment to Word is, Word is Auto Repair for one thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents to come out of GL two oh five three nine eight one zero zero zero.
I have one other question, I guess, on that vehicle. Nothing to do with that bill, but it has to do with the vehicle. Are we gonna have additional cost to put markings on it?
Yes, I've got the estimates for that. We're about three hundred and fifty, I think, for the the markings. And something else I'll be covering later in my section on my agenda is license iron for the vehicle. That is under my other stretch of business.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion again to make payment.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion on the table to make payment of the Word is Auto Repair for one thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents. Is there support? It's been moved and supported. Further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Plavich, yes. Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Next item of, actually, the next two items of business, Ms. Ellery Summers, if you'd like to take point.
Well, we just recently put bids out for lawn mowing and snow plowing season is coming up. And I think we should put out for bids, snow plowing.
We didn't put out the bids for snow plowing?
We did for lawn mowing.
But not for snow plowing?
And that was only for the lift stations, but snow plowing, we have not.
And where do we snow plow?
So currently, we've snowplowed both the M thirty-two bypass from the intersection of Bagley, Westeredly to Green Acres, which is can't think of the the name of the street that comes out there just before Lake Winnia. Twenty-three South from Thunder Bay Avenue to Island Drive. Then we also snowplow South Side Fire Department, this building. And then snow plowing has historically also included all of the lift stations for, for ingress and egress for Water Department as well, so all of our lift stations.
That's a general fund expense across the board. It's not separated?
It's separated.
Yes.
So the bids have gone out for the.
I'm asking the board if they wish for us to put these out for bids to to put out for bids. So so we receive bids and, you know, whoever can do this.
So, long and short, I would entertain a motion to move forward allowing the treasurer to secure bids for snow removal.
So move.
With a motion on the table in support. Any other discussion?
Yeah, are we going to spell it out on the RFP that where the locations are and what the cost is going to be each time, so? I'd like it to be as specific as possible.
Yeah, as would.
Like the insurance limits and all that. Because that's what Steve talked about before.
Steve talking about insurance, no way.
I know, it's nutty.
I do have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Just because I feel that there's a need to seek bids for lawn mowing or for snow plowing or whatever it is. Then it always seems to fall on my plate to have to do the work for it. So I'm just curious why that is.
Well, I, we could split hairs all day. I I guess I don't know. It was coming from you, so if you want to take that point, then I I just looked at it as you took the initiative to bring it to the board for that request.
Right, but I could make a list of ten things that we should do.
I think we all think it's something that needs to be done.
We could all do that list. I know that for a fact.
And I guess there's things I don't bring to the board that probably need to be done because I know it's gonna fall on me and I don't have time to do it in a timely manner.
Many of the things that you talked about could be templated. And so that that would just be routine to all RFPs and so I can certainly help some of that templated language.
So we have a motion and support on the table. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, aye. Uh, next item, new item is the tax insert, Ms. Ellery Summers.
Well, we're getting ready to send out the two thousand twenty-one winter tax bills. It's always been, you know, brought to our board that if we would like to put in a newsletter or some kind of an insert with the tax bills, I mean, obviously, there'd be a cost to us. I did bring this last year for the cost of, if we did a newsletter at the time last year, we didn't feel that we wanted to spend the money for that to be done, to be inserted. We would have to print them, copy them, get the papers to equalization for when they print and fold and stuff our tax bills. Just curious if there's any interest in the board of any information you'd want to put on an insert.
Those inserts have to. Those inserts, as I recall, having stumbled across this while working for the county. There's some carefulness that has to be taken, that wrong word, isn't it? There's some prudence that has to be done in in wording such a thing, especially if you're gonna advocate for anything in in such a document, so. I think it has to be reviewed carefully and perhaps even by legal counsel before we even put something like that in.
Well, and I guess my question, when is the the deadline that this would have to go?
November fifth, so we could, if the board so chooses to do something, it would give us, you know, a week or so to work on something. Have it approved at our next board meeting because they need in the minutes that our board approved whatever it was that would go to the county. So I'm just throwing it out there.
Jesse Paul.
I'd like to recommend as a support postpone this till next year, but let's bring it up before there's only a week to get done.
Well, I just got the notification of when they're due.
In somebody's calendar that we do talk about this and put something we want to do instead of trying to get something done in two weeks and later we'll look at everything else.
We have two opportunities to do that, both winter and summer tax, right?
Correct.
And so again, we could probably have some sort of a, what 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 were you thinking in terms like a departmental update?
I'm, I had put together an entire newsletter, two-sided newsletter that I brought to the board last year. We decided not to do it because of the cost that it would cost us to print them, copy them and that type of thing. I'm just asking the board what their wishes are, you know.
Well, what was the cost at that point?
I don't know off the top of my head, but it was, it was, it was enough.
And that's been important enough to do that.
Yes, trustee Polly.
I think this is a great thing, but I think it's something we just can't throw together. I believe it's something that has to be put together and the board all blessed that it's the thing we want to do and proceed and have the costs and everything there, but we can't do that in two weeks.
So I guess then let's, we could go about it constructively as such, maybe a motion to table for consideration for the twenty twenty summer tax bill, because then we're actually into a fiscal and I have the propensity to have more viable updates, if that's the wish of the board, to have a greater impact rather than coming, closing out a year with our our winter tax cycle to come in, that'd be.
Well, if the board chooses, for example, to go for a millage next year, and again, that's tricky language, but but that would be.
That's where we almost got our.
I'm just saying, but that would be an option. A newsletter is an option or whatever, if something else comes up that we'd want to put in there. I'm just asking the board their wishes.
Do we currently have any presence on Facebook or?
No.
I know those can obviously be very inexpensive ways to get our word out.
Would you like to manage the Facebook page because?
No.
I'm, no.
I'm a cerebral pigme when it comes to that.
Yeah, and that's, that that would be, that's a Pandora's box. I don't think that we really, yes, I don't disagree that social media sites have the ability to reach the masses at a very cost-effective means. It's just the management of that platform. Yes, trustee Paul.
I think this insert, if the tax bill, I think it's a great way to get to all the people in our township, taxpayers. A very reasonable way to do it. We just need time to put it together correctly and get the right things in there. And I think it's, I think it's a great idea. But I don't think we have time to do it this fall, but we can get ready for next spring.
Well, given that I'm, Steve and I both are not going to be at the next board meeting, yeah, I just do not have it done between now but I'm, I I it isn't even on the, on the table yet to table, so it's just, it's almost a discussion item. Well, it's on the agenda, I guess, but.
That's why I just said, right.
So I think there's the discussion's been had. I think let's, let's re.
We've got some way to trigger our memory somewhere around, somewhere at a meeting in April.
I'll make a note of it.
And our summer tax bills are sent out by?
July first.
So.
So they would have to know by.
So maybe.
June first.
Yeah.
Afternoon, so it would have to be discussed in April.
I was gonna say, I would say let's, let's discuss this effectively in our May, one of our two May meetings, so that.
June first, I think it is.
Oh, June first.
Evening. Yeah, or April evening meeting.
Okay.
So Norm made a motion.
No, there was no motion. There's, there's no action. This is just.
I didn't make a motion.
No.
So we didn't make a motion to table us?
No, I was offering a motion to table, but this is as trustee, Rusty. We'll reconvene and discuss this for the the summer tax, so in April. Moving forward into department reports, clerk report.
I have been working with Laura in Chelsea from Straley Lamp線 and BSNA. We're all working on the chart of accounts conversion. We have to have that done by the beginning of our next fiscal year. Everything that's been requested from us has now been sent to BSNA, so we're just waiting to hear back from them. Now, just a reminder, now that we're in the middle of the conversion again, we cannot add, change or do any to our chart of accounts, so. The clerk's office has on boarded two new full-time employees for the fire department. We are working with Jenny from Laban Agency on the new onboarding online, so that will be a quicker process for us in the future. We have prepared for the workers' comp audit, which I've met with that auditor today and we should be wrapping that up next week. Deputy Haley Birmingham is at elections training, one step closer to getting certified in elections. We're very lucky that the class was actually offered at ACC. If you've gone by our office, the deputy clerk's office has been painted. We are scheduling fire department interviews for Friday, which Nathan and I and the chief will conduct. We had four fire requests in September and I coordinated the scheduling of the first CIP committee, committee meeting for Thursday at nine AM with Norman Ross.
Thank you for your report. Let me borrow my report. I didn't get myself a hard copy. Um, as for the supervisors' report, everybody has a copy of it in front of them. As you see, a candidate went through a chronological order of some of the dates in the first part. We have already received fifty percent of the dispersment for the CLF RF ARPA monies. Conducted, as going back, conducted to shut off a nerve cartridge point, finalized a stop work order, unfortunately, on West Long Lake at a residence and helped the resident owner go through the special use process and paperwork to go to the planning commission. On October fifth, we held our first Brownfield redevelopment authority meeting. On the fourteenth, participated and going to be participating in a webinar hosted by NEMCOG for the ARPA monies and just kind of staying on top of the legal changes to the still non-completed rules and regs for the money. Completed. Uh, completed, did, uh, FCC for the fire department radio bands, uh, conducted eleven site reviews as zoning administrator, seven of which were residential, four commercial, conducted five site visits, uh, for zoning enforcement. Involved with three involving either chicks and chickens or barking dogs. Um, had a couple weird weeks there. And then also I'll be, my primary goal, uh, after today's meeting is to move forward with, uh, the corrective action plan, uh, for, uh, Department of Treasuries for the audit efficiencies, uh, that is, uh, with a due date of, uh, November fifth. And I'm also, uh, starting the, uh, CVTRS, uh, revenue sharing, uh, paperwork, uh, which is due December first.
I have just a question.
Yeah.
On these zoning plans that you reviewed, are you reviewing them with Mr. Paulie since his contract says?
Yeah, so I, most, the majority had happened before, um, and I'm just basically folding him in so that, as he stated, part of his contract expansion was being moved. So oh, I came into the township under the guise of Don Gilman, so I'm helping him get acclimated to ordinance one forty-two and helping the zoning administration that he'll be kinda stepping more and more into.
So, yes.
Yes.
One way to get there.
Well, I take whichever route I so choose. Yes, just see.
As says, receive fifty percent of the, uh, LFRF money for fifty-seven, so two hundred and fifty grand roughly.
Four hundred and fifty thousand, that is fifty percent. Our total, our total dispersment, uh, for those monies was nine hundred and fifteen thousand five hundred and thirty-six.
And that is.
Yeah, right now it's some general fund. I was gonna report on that, the money came in.
Okay.
Um, half of it. Right now it's in the general fund and it will be moved to its own account.
It will be in its own special fund according to our CPAs.
Yeah, and in that discussion, we can put it into an interest-bearing account, and we have a great amount of flexibility in that conversation and.
Well, there's not interest, it's not good right now.
Well, interest isn't great right now.
Chelsea set it up in a checking account in our general ledger, and now that we can't change our general ledger, we're very limited.
Yeah, the numbers are.
Everything that we discussed, we kind of now hand over on in terms of.
Because of the.
Well, I can see if there's gonna be interest on that checking account.
Well, well, right now, by chart of accounts, we can't change it anyways, correct?
Correct.
Right, but we could, depending on what type of checking account we set up, there could be interest.
Because part of that is, uh, the state has allowed the accrual of those interest dollars, even if, uh, up four years after the accrual of all hundred percent of those monies, we can build an interest. And if we decide four years downstream that we don't want a single cent of that money, we can actually as an entity hold on to the monies accrued by interest. Sorry.
So, and it's only six months, hopefully we are done with this chart of conversions by April first. Unless the state changes the rules again.
Yes, which hasn't happened once.
I was biggest observation and I was unaware that chickens barked.
Well, in certain parts of town.
Okay, so aside from, you know, Michelle had already reported working on the chart of accounts, we received the ARPA money, half of it. Um, the clerk and I met with a representative from Michigan class regarding investing. Um, we did get notification from the CARES Act, the prior to re, provider relief fund through the Department of Human Services. We received this money back in April of two thousand twenty. We paid it back in May of this year. After many, many hours and phone calls and trying to figure all this out because they had to have a report done, come to find out because we sent the money back, we didn't need to do, send a report in. That was frustrating. Um, I attended the Michigan Municipal Treasurers Association Fall Conference where I received my Michigan Certified Professional Treasurer plaque. That was very informative. Um, TCF Bank has now become Huntington Bank as of today. Um, and I'm, uh, the administrator and working on the transition. Um, special assess, road assessments I'm working on, that's pretty much done, um, to get ready for the winter tax collection. Um, I wanted to give everybody an update as well regarding the water sewer collections. It's, we've put some things in place and it's really helping with the collections of money. Um, monthly reminder calls are being done for past due accounts. Delinquent notices are sent out monthly. Shut-off door hangers, ours put out pretty much every day, and the customers have seventy-two hours to pay, otherwise they get shut off. Um, and that's getting people to come in and pay. F and V and the front office and Amy, um, we do monthly tracker meetings, um, that they go over reader questions and follow up if anything's off or not jiving, just to figure out what the issue is. And anything over six months goes old, goes, um, on the winter taxes as delinquent water. And we have approximately two hundred, hundred customers that have signed up for ACH, um, water sewer payments, which is wonderful. So that's just another, a lot of people, they keep signing up almost every day. I did the renewal only for six months on two CDs that we have because the interest rate is point zero one percent. So I just did six months. Um, and the bank recs are done. Obviously, we pay our bills and do payroll and billing every month. Um, and then we should be receiving a revenue sharing payment at the end of the month. And just to remind everyone, MTA Alpina Chapter is meeting on Monday, the eighteenth, at Austin Township Hall at seven PM. Everybody should have got the notification.
Um, and to, to add to, uh, Ms. Ellery Summers' report, uh, with the city village township revenue sharing, uh, has been, uh, announced at the state level, um, that moving forward, uh, all of our fears of a reduction of revenue sharing dollars, uh, seemingly have been dismissed, and they are looking at two percent increases annually moving forward. Uh, that came from Judy Allen, MTA. So, uh, our Kevin Molly isn't here, he is on vacation. Um, so move forward to Chris.
I settled with the Walgreens tribunal, uh, or tribunal case. They were seeking, uh, a reduction of six hundred and ninety-seven thousand, uh, taxable value assessed in tax. Uh, we were at seven hundred and sixty-nine, seventy-three for taxable. Uh, researching uh, other private locations than, uh, Walgreens had. The typical, uh, step was between fifty thousand and a hundred and twenty. Depending on the earlier, basically, more rural areas, the lower the, what they were asking. So we settled our value of seven hundred and ten thousand. So basically, it's a fifty-nine thousand dollar reduction in taxable value, which basically equates to the township loss of approximately, uh, or a hundred and eighty dollars. But it's, uh, it's, it's a lot, you know, with three bills, it's a, it's a, uh, a dollar per thousand dollars taxable value, so fifty-nine dollars. You know, curse, um, so we're talking, pardon me, dollars. And, uh, we have three more, uh, private cases, uh, upcoming, uh, before the entire party. Which Tim has been getting involved in. Uh, Meyer, uh, and Meyer, uh, I got a notification, uh, April twentieth, uh, valuation affidavits and, uh, pre-hearing statement. So in essence, uh, with the entirety, uh, you better have a crazy. This is basically who has the best person. And they fight it that way unless you stip, you know, a lot of times, I'd say ninety percent or ninety-five percent of the time, uh, these cases are stipulating between parties because it's a big expense, uh, you're talking maybe nine, ten thousand dollars for an appraisal. Then, uh, attorneys that go along with it, uh, and it's right, uh, then your appraiser would have to make an appearance at the tribunal and they don't go for free. Uh, so he would have to pay for that. And typically, the other taxing authorities do not get involved. So basically, the cost is a part of the. Uh, so something to think about, uh, just to let you know that's coming up. Uh, they're seeking a reduction of value of two million dollars minus, uh, with a reduction in a million dollars in taxable value. Writing is the next one. Uh, they're seeking, uh, value reduction of.
Did you say writing, Chris? Writing?
Writing. Yeah, we're at eight hundred thousand, uh, approximately, uh, value, uh, they're seeking that, that value. So then the next one is the chemical slash TCF slash. Is also seeking a reduction of approximately, uh, one half to, uh, two hundred and eighty-two thousand five hundred. So like I said, ninety-five percent of these can be stipulated, uh, you know. From the attorneys I've talked to, uh, before, uh, they're pretty easy to get along with and they know, you know, that, you know, there's a cost involved in both parties, uh, and it's a lot cheaper to settle and go on to the next one.
And, and Chris challenges, um, you can, you can file any type of petition you want. Now give us the supporting documents, and that puts them under the gun and usually.
So.
Brings them out.
It's better to settle. He said, I, I've been to a tribunal class, uh, where one of the tribunal judges put it on and she even said, you're better off to settle, because this game, it can get expensive. So I just wanted the board to be aware, you know, you know, this point, uh, that those are coming up. We're looking at possibly without knowing the CPI. And that, that will come out, I checked out that, that will be at November, uh, state tax position week. It sounded very gentle, uh, so probably no fire today, but that's on November seventeenth, uh, with the CPI, it'll be, uh, so that'd be what we use to what our taxable value will increase. So I'll have a better handle on that. Uh, within new construction and everything, you're at least you're looking at, um, an increase of eleven million dollars in taxable value this year.
And then also, uh, just recently, I gave you, uh, a, a project to create basically a cost for the, the potential audit site going through the Brownfield, uh, redevelopment authority. Um, so if you would like to.
Yeah, uh, a retail store is approximately, portion of it will be, you know, what I priced it out as. I get, I don't have all the multipliers yet, so I have to use last year's figures. So the retail part will be approximately two hundred and eight, six thousand dollars. All these, uh, the actual building itself will be about one point six million. Then, of course, the land, I, I, right now, I have it at five hundred and sixty thousand. So you're talking two point seven, that's without, because I don't know, aside from the parking lot, you know, square footage of that or type of building materials that they're using. It'd be probably close to three million dollars in, uh, value that would be added to the tax.
Any questions for Mr. Lewis?
Yes, for Lewis, Mr. Lewis or, or, um, or perhaps, uh, Tim. There are times to settle. My point of view, there's times to stand and fight, and when you're talking about a million dollar reduction, the costs involved, I assume, are greater based on the amount in the fight. Uh, so, uh, there may be times when the financial impact to the township is such that, uh, it's appropriate to, uh, stand our ground, uh, assuming the appraisals testify. Right, so, um, yeah, but, but it might be worthwhile to spend the money necessary for an appraisal, uh, when somebody's seeking a million dollar reduction, for example, in tax, uh, as opposed to two hundred and some thousand dollars. So, uh, that's just something I throw out there.
Yeah, and to, to clarify, that million dollar tax reduction, that's based still, that's not the full reduction. It would be one dollar for every thousand.
Well, right, right, so I understand that.
For a township, for a three, you know, three bills, you're, uh, for a million dollars, you know.
Thirty.
Three thousand.
I have to see where the decimal point falls. Yeah.
By giving example, uh, how these changes can go bad in a hurry. Back in two thousand fourteen, Menards built facility and, and that's been on. The year after they built, they went to, and they went on the dark strip that, while it was custom-made, built the suit. You know, it's not worth basically what we paid for. And to this day, they're still in, they're at the circuit court level. Or the Court of Appeals, I should say, Court of Appeals, and this is seven years later. Back three years ago, when I had a class for my renewal, uh, I've one of the instructors was the equalization. He already had a million dollars into this one. And from my, from my, talking to others, that's, Myers does not be able you know, so you're in for a fight. So, and the, the attorneys they have are that's all they did, Honeman, uh, Norr, and I think it used to be Honeman.
Miller, Cantil.
Cohen and, uh, that's all they do. They already have their. You know, there's gonna be, there's no, and even if we are getting an appraisal, it's not a guarantee that we're gonna profit. And that's some of the things that we have to weigh, uh, as a township, as far as is it gonna be worth the expense?
And it would be, it would be nice if it weren't solely on the township's back as being a pass through for the primary county's tax collection, but the county doesn't take any role in fighting that. So.
Even though it may be the right case to.
But even though it's, it's, it's my job to set, uh, to set value and define that, uh, sometimes you just, you know, there's, there's, yeah, like you said, there's times where you know, you gotta say, you know, you know, we're not.
The, the tax tribunal and the appellate courts don't do us any favor either with commercial properties because they say, well, there are three different approaches, and we'll know it when we see it. Uh, all three could be valid, maybe one's valid. There's no hard and fast rule, so we got the income approach and, uh, you gotta dig into their earnings and the cost. Yeah, uh, as opposed to just what's the land and what's the building worth? And, uh, they're just a mess. Their decisions are a mess.
And it's not that, they're not valuing, it's when it goes to a, you know, like I, I appraised the actual land and the structure. And that's what they're arguing, you know, saying this building, you're not, you know, just because Culvers is in there, Myers is in there, Walmart's in that building. And if they work in there, what is this building and land? So to reach for fire, you know, that, you know, so. That's.
Yeah, any questions, Mr. Lewis? Uh, Chief.
Good morning again. Uh, just like to take the opportunity to thank the board for allowing us to go over some fire department business. Uh, twenty-five working days for me, a little bit over a month and four days. And a lot happening. Uh, but first off, I would like to introduce Scott Waterson. Uh, I'd like to introduce him as one of our new paid-on call, uh, firefighters for us. Scott is a longtime career firefighter. He's currently out at the Combat Range Strength Center as a shift. As a shift work, true leader there. He acts in absence of the deputy chief on shift. So he has a plethora of knowledge, lots of certifications. And he's willing to come and help us out and cover some shifts here and there where we might need some help. And who knows, in a year, he is looking for retirement, maybe next November. That he might be able to spend a little bit more time helping us in our situation. But at this point, I would just like to have the board welcome him if he would and let him, we're just gonna try and get him up the snuff and. Get in some gear and start the training process so he can start helping us out. And I appreciate your, your efforts, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Watson.
Can I ask a question? So aside from helping us with pay down call, you could also pick up some shifts?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, wonderful.
Maybe we go higher than that once I retire at the end of October next year.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I certainly want to tap his, his resources and his know-how and he's, he's. Sounds like our guys are going again. But anyhow, with that being said, it's been an extremely busy month. And I'm gonna try to get through this list here. I've got a couple of. Not really additions, but some things I'm gonna add to my one liners there that will fit. But anyhow, thanks again, Scott, for being here. We, as you well know, we had the new ambulances or the newer ambulances. And Nathan had asked me to put our highest mileage ambulance in storage. And we had done that out at station three, we put that, so we weren't requiring more miles on that particular unit. We had the old rescue unit that we put in its place back out here at Northside Station. And while I was noticing a little bit of oil on the floor when that vehicle pulled out one morning, we found out that. It needed some service work. It had a rear seal on the rear pumpkin differential that was leaking. So we took that over to, actually, I took that over to LP and Transmission. And on my way there, I discovered that it had quite a vibration and I asked the guys if that vibration's been there for a while. And of course, the vehicle hadn't been driven and probably. And this, you know, weekly checks for somebody to just check it, make sure it was running. So that vehicle was basically a spare to us. Turns out, there was wheel and lug nut damage and stud damage on the rear of that vehicle. Of which it damaged the wheels to the point where we need to replace them. So talking with Joe over at LP and Transmission. And that's not an easy find. I mean, that's typically not something the guys check every day when they're going out there. But we've since addressed that issue that at least once, once a month, I want to have the wheel lugs checked and torqued. And so we've got some new procedures in place from that. But I was glad that I actually drove it in a non-emergent situation and I found that vibration in there. And I said to Joe at the transmission shop, if they could check that over, when they did, they discovered that the, the, the lug nuts had backed off apparently. Creating damage to the rims. So with repairs to that particular vehicle, so we can get that back in service, which it's sitting over at LP and Transmission at this point. So we can get that vehicle back in service. They gave me an estimate of eight hundred dollars to fix that particular vehicle. And then we would get our, one of the new ambulances with the highest mileage back into storage until we can. Come up with a plan of what's gonna happen with those vehicles. So.
So with, with that being said, you would like to approve the expenditures or not at this point?
I would like to approve the expenditures if I have the board's support on that, if need be.
So are you looking at the, the rear differential seal and the rims of not to exceed eight hundred to come out of G L two oh five three three six nine eight one zero zero zero?
That sounds like a familiar number, but I don't have a memorized, like memorized like you do.
This vehicle maintenance?
Yes.
So I guess at that point in time, I'd entertain a motion to allow the chief to proceed with expenditures not to exceed eight hundred dollars to come out of. Two oh five three three six nine eight one zero zero zero. I'd make that motion. We have a motion on the table. Is there support?
I'll support it.
Been moved and supported for their discussion.
Are the funds there?
There are funds still.
Where are we getting it fixed at?
LP and Transmission.
So that's part of the motion. And which, do we know what year this ambulance is?
I believe it's the two thousand eight, but do not hold me to that.
For all good luck, that's loose.
I don't believe all of them were. I have not looked at the, the rim myself, but.
So that had to be somebody else had to notice or feel that before that was put in the bar.
Well, they may not have, because I can tell you that when we went out to station three to take the vehicle out there. I, it was the first time I had driven it and I told Nathan, I put the vehicle up to emergency speed when I was going out there to see. I wanna, I'm starting to get now where I'm getting a little bit of time, so I'm putting myself behind the wheel of different vehicles. And I want to find out, because I used to be licensed in front of alignments and brakes and all that stuff, so I do have a little knowledge of that. So I just wanna drive those vehicles myself, find out if there's any idiosyncrasies going on with the vehicle. Become familiar with them myself. And I discovered, I thought it was possibly a tire or some wheels out of balance at that point. Cause I hit sixty-seven miles an hour. I know that's speeding, but I wanted to get it up where we might be able to experience. If they were responding to an actual emergency and it was on M sixty-five, so I was only going two miles an hour over. Or M thirty-two, excuse me. So I wanted to see what, and as I felt the vibration, I took it up a little bit higher. I increased the vibration and luckily enough, I made that conversation with Joe at LP and Transmission to. Hey, check the balance on these wheels to see where we're at. And he called me right away and he goes, we got loose nug, lug nuts. So we could, it could have been a tragic situation. Yeah. So. And that's not something that typically is done on the daily checks, but it is certainly something that's gonna be added to the arsenal with the torque wrench. And we're gonna do, we might have to purchase that torque wrench to make those proper checks once a month anyhow. Or if there's any time any wheel operations are done, tires, wheels, we'll have to recheck those.
These are steel rims, not aluminum rims on these vehicles, right?
Well, I believe those are chrome rims, but they're still considered steel. So yeah, they do have a tendency to loosen up after driven. I think. Right.
Any other discussion on this motion?
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin?
Yes.
Clerk Flavich, yes. Treasurer Larry Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes.
All right. I don't, thank you. Item number three, run activity formula, probably find in your board packet there. There's a pie chart that was, it should look like this. That was a breakdown of the, the runs that we had for the month of September and that included the entire month. Extremely busy month. A couple of different days, we averaged nine and ten runs per day. Yesterday, I believe that we were at seven runs. Our number, numbers have just really increased. And it seems to have increased all over the county from what I'm hearing from different departments. So I don't know the correlation of that and why, other than obviously we know we have an agent community. We have a lot of calls where attempted suicide, those type of things. So I don't know, I don't know all the statistics. There's probably some medical statistics out there on why this is happening. But we seem to be having more, but as you can see in the report, there's a total one hundred and seven for the month, seventy-three of which were medical. Ten were vehicle accidents, twelve were service calls, and that would be basically, if we have a list assist or we get there, there's no emergent patient. They need help getting back into the chair or something in that nature. Had five false alarms. We had five fires, one mutilate and a hazard, which would be probably a downed power line, something like that. I will, I'm sure if you probably checked your board or your emails yesterday, I sent the note out to the board members yesterday. We had a structured fire yesterday morning. I just do believe that numbers are on the rise, you know, talking with our counterparts all over the county. Everybody's experiencing the same thing. The radio just, just never gets quiet anymore for some reason or other. So I, I don't know if that's a trend that's gonna keep going, but that might be something we have to look at down the road. That, you know, we're gonna drive up some costs and the more we're running out the door. Obviously, that's a concern no matter where we're at, but I just wanted to give that information to you. So you have that at your disposal if you'd like to look at, if you have any questions on that or want to see anything. Was that adequate when I sent to everybody about the structure fires yesterday?
Yeah, I thought it was wonderful.
Perfect. That, that's what we look to do is I'd like to keep you guys informed. And, and then the next item number four on my list here. Well, obviously, over the time we've had. Little period in time that we didn't know which way we were going and a lot of things got pushed by the wayside, like as of ordering medical supplies. To keep our rigs equipped. These are daily working supplies that they need for performing their duties of EMS. So I had one of my firefighters compile a list. They got the prices on all the products that we needed. You probably have a detailed list in your packet. And so basically, the majority of what we use the most of is rubber gloves, believe it or not. And the P P Es for, you know, the different nature of call that we have to have. And with COVID and all the different things out there, we, we definitely want to make sure that we have our protection levels up. So gloves is our number one mask, but as you'll see on your list there, there's a various amount of supplies. And that would cover all that we need to carry on business for quite some time. And restock some of the, the missing supplies that we do have. And the total for that is two thousand four hundred thirty-seven dollars and forty-nine cents. And I'd like to get that purchased as soon as possible. And we do have that line item to cover that expense at this point in time, Mr. Polly.
This. List here, what would you say that's gonna be a supply for six months, a year, nine months?
Well, I would, I would like to say it's gonna be a supply for six to eight months. But, you know, at the given rate that we're, our run numbers are increasing. I'm not positive on that. And given this is my first go around of putting this order into you folks. I really don't know where that's gonna, after I have a couple of months of being able to establish what we have for supplies going, you know, going out of pocket. I might be able to get a little bit better, a set of numbers. Like keep in mind, this is, you know. We didn't have any supplies for this station basically up here for a period of time while the city was covering. So a lot of that is restocking both stations and some, you know, making sure. Rigs meet the minimum standard for medical first response.
But my question, why I ask that is, we still don't know what we're doing with the ambulances?
Well, I, I do believe there's been some talk, you know, I was asked to park the rig with the most mileage on it. Cause we're looking at our options. I do believe there was gonna be a committee put together that we talked about last time, equipment committee.
We already have a fire committee established. That was trustee Lapp and clerk Flavich and myself. And the discussion is to take the highest mileage of the two newer ones and put that up for sale. And then with the, the funds that are brought back to the equipment mileage line. Then could then be dispersed for the purchase of two rescue rigs, similar to that when we did our field trip. Of the Presqueal F three fifty fitted out.
Exactly what we've been speaking about. It'd be really nice to activate that committee sooner, sooner than later. So we can get at looking. I've been doing some research on different vehicles that would probably fit our needs.
Yes, Michelle.
Did you have a question?
Well, I was just gonna say that anybody can request a committee meeting.
Okay.
And kind of get everybody coordinated. So if you want to coordinate it, get ahold of us and figure out where all three of us can be available.
Excellent. Yeah, I proceed with it sooner than later.
Um, I just have. A couple of questions. So all of these prices, did whoever put this together, it says requested by, doesn't have a name, it says to keep.
I had, I had Matt Benedict. He's in charge of our medical supplies.
So, but what I'm wondering is, did he? Where is all this? Is it all being bought through Amazon? I mean, did he get different?
This is, this is a company they've been using for years.
They have a price.
Yeah.
I guess we're really big into checking different companies.
Yeah, I mean, when, when you get to that point, I've done that in my past career, a different position. It's, it's nickel and dime, maybe.
I mean, we have found.
Fifty percent on supplies by checking three or more sources, so.
I mean, even Amazon, I mean, you can get there. I mean, but I think we need to do our due diligence to get the cheapest price.
Right.
You know, that, that's what I just wanted to ask. I don't have a problem with ordering this stuff. I just want to make sure we're getting the best price we can get.
Because it seems the township has gotten to have it that we've always ordered from this place. In that price check. And then we have ended up paying a lot more for some.
Well, I can, I can, I can assign that to have him do one more price check just to verify. Or do you want, you, you want two more price checks? I guess it'd be the pleasure of the board. I'm, I'm here to serve about what you desire that we do.
Well, my, my question to that, I'm, I'm not opposed. I, I do agree that, you know, just because we've always ordered from company A, doesn't mean that we should always order from company A. But my, my fear is, are there items on this list that need to be into brought into service now? Because.
Right. We, we invented a deficit of materials to get this done. That's why I had him mop on it right away. They have it set online. They're able to get right in there and find out exactly what they need. Amazon turns into a big searching nightmare for us when it comes to medical supplies. I mean, given our next order, I could certainly provide that. I would like to see us move on this now so that we get the supplies that we need. For our area residents or for responding. And if this is something that at a different point in time that you would like me to get three bids, I will make that known. And whoever I assign that task to assemble a list, I'll just tell them to come at me with three bids. And, or three quotes, if you will, not necessarily bids, but we'll, we'll try to do our due diligence and research that as best we can.
Then I'll make a motion to order the supplies as, as indicated, with the understanding that future orders. Price check.
I'll support.
We have a motion and support to move forward with the purchase of two thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars, forty-nine cents to be coming out of G L two oh five three three six seven three one zero zero zero. Any further discussion?
That it's gonna take a big chunk of that, what's left in that budget.
There's gonna be less than two hundred dollars left in that.
Well, there's something that's come out since.
Right.
Since September thirty, that, because I have a September thirty printout of it.
I just printed mine out.
At the time that he put that order together, there was enough, there was enough in my line item to support that. So I don't anticipate that we should need any other supplies before the end of fiscal year is what I'm. If something does, you know, major happen and we need more supplies, then, you know, we're gonna try some different avenues with getting them resupplied. Possibly from the, the hospital or, you know, our advanced life support. I'm working on it and that relationship. So if we use one, we get one, that type of thing. But that has not all been established yet. So working on that is, it'll be a baby step, but we'll, we'll get there. I'm hoping, but.
Have you checked with Mark Hall at. The county, because I just bet on their monthly meetings that we have that I listen to, they always talk about anybody needing any P P E stuff. And that I assume that's the habit they're.
So they do have, they do have some gloves. They're not the nitrate good gloves that you take into a situation. But I, but on a, almost the, well, tourist, well, we, this is, I'm on the phone with him all about something. We're, we're corresponding back and forth, trying to make sure, you know, are there some things that he has knowledge of that I do not? So I, I try to, any resources out there, I'll try to pick their brain just to, to get that to happen. But.
So we have a motion and support on the table. Any further discussion?
Roll call please.
Trustee Lappin?
Yes.
Clerk Flavich, yes. Treasurer Larry Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner?
Yes.
Trustee Polly?
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that. Moving along to item number five, as we. As we spoke earlier about the word of automotive bill for the chief's vehicle, if you will. That we obtained from the Department of Natural Resources mutual aid. System, it's a federal vehicle that we're able to use at our disposal for as long as we want to use it. We just have to do the general care and upkeep of that vehicle until so time that we don't want to use it anymore, and then we just give them a call and say. Hey, can you come pick it up or can, where, where can we drop this vehicle off? With that being said, I'll add something that the, at the end of this that, that is not on my report, but it'll go along with this. Federal surplus program, if you will, but. I originally had gotten a quote for this to take place, to put new lights and sirens on the vehicle. And when I got the quote, quite honestly, about fellow or backwards, doesn't know that's never gonna happen. So we did some research on our own to get light packages and certain things. And with the, with the resources that I have with staff and myself. In my past job, I did all this wiring and lighting, different type stuff. On my emergency vehicles with the department that I used to work. We're very comfortable, there's three, four of us that are very comfortable. We figure within a thousand dollars, we should be able to equip everything and we'll, we'll do the installation ourselves. I mean, we are looking at a two thousand five vehicle, this has a hundred and seven thousand miles on it. So I'm not looking for this board to put a three thousand dollar package on it. If this week, if we can get by with the legal lighting package and siren. So we can legally use that vehicle to respond to an emergency. I'm thinking that we should be able to do it for less than a thousand dollars or up to a thousand dollars. So, you know, and that seems expensive, but, you know. Basically, just the siren unit is going to be almost five hundred dollars, so the lighting has gotten a lot cheaper nowadays with the LEDs and different things like that. So I think we can accomplish this task by ourselves in-house and do it as we, we get to it. It's not, it's not an emergent situation that I have that, but it is, you know, responding around town and different things like that. It's critical if you're on an accident scene, it's critical to be lit up and, you know, for safety of the, the folks out on the scene.
What GL were you using?
It'll come out of probably equipment maintenance. Yeah. I, I will look closer at the line item unless somebody has a suggestion, but vehicle maintenance would probably be.
Just a suggestion, like when you come to us, I mean, have. You know what I mean, can?
Okay.
Know where you're gonna get it, it just makes it kind of go a little faster.
What money's in there?
I got a little learning curve going still.
Sixteen thousand nine hundred twenty-four. It's at, we've only used thirty-two percent of what we budgeted for the year.
We have any, do we have anything coming up that we're aware of?
Just the only thing that is that ambulance seems to keep coming back up.
All of our state certifications are up to date for the remainder of this year, correct?
Well, that's funny that you should ask that, it's coming up on my list here, let me get to that in just a minute.
Okay, because another inclusion is I, I don't prefer that last minute business is brought to an agenda. If it's not on the agenda by the submission date, we'll work on that together.
Right.
Okay, continue.
So we need to.
Do we have a motion on?
No, I have a question though.
Okay.
Um, what about like the decals or the lettering on the side, that's going to be an additional expense?
So I did get a quote for that, it's three hundred dollars for the reflective decals and striping. That puts it into NFPA, NFPA compliance.
Yeah, I, you know, we're, we're talking about fire department that's strapped for time and everything else, and we're worried about a chief's car. There's nothing against you, chief, but why can't this go on the back burner for a while and get some of these other things done? And also, we're putting money into this and we're not sure if we're gonna be able to get enough money to get this party department moving through where it's gotta go. I think this is a great thing to have, but another part is I, I'm not comfortable with. You're a fireman, you're not mechanics, you're not electricians, you don't need somebody getting hurt, putting something together to make this. So we can save money, we're here to be who we are, that's only one account.
Just to kind of add to what Norm said. Having non-mechanics work on any vehicle for the township can get us into a social relation. We've.
We've had it.
We've had it before, so unless it's a mechanic or someone licensed to do the work, it can get us into.
I, I worked with a fellow in my office that who did emergency lighting and siren and so on installations. Costs a lot more than those dollars for just the labor. Usually a couple of thousands, maybe three, he did it for the sheriff's department, I think on a low ball amount. I don't know that there's any licensing for that, but he's typically, I mean, he's, he's one that people come to from all around to have. You know, the Maccah, city or county. Departments come down to him and so on, so, you know, I'm not sure there's licensing for that, but I, that's still a point we'll take it. That as your calls increase and so on. You know, if you really have time to do this and do it well, and, and, and then that, that's after. That discussion's after the point that Norm makes that I'm getting too many things ahead of the. Horse here, whatever.
I, I just have a question, and I just want clarification from the other board members. So this vehicle was purchased for you to use.
Wasn't, wasn't purchased.
Or not purchased, it was a gift, it's for you to use. So is the intent of that vehicle for you to use? Now you come into work, you use it when you're out during the day, and then you take your own vehicle, you go home? Or is the intent for you to take it home at night, bring it in, go back and forth?
Right.
I just want to know what the intent is.
Well.
And I want to know what the other board members just.
My, my thought on that is that it probably, I mean, he's on call twenty-four seven in terms of any emergencies where he goes and. Supports his crew on scene, so I would have expected to actually go home, but that's.
I just want to.
Once it's in full use.
I, I just want to say that. Once the decals are on it, it's going to be a township vehicle going out of the township. And I know Nathan, you have had a field calls when somebody from the DPW was way at the very. South end of our water system and it was closer to go to Connie's Cafe for lunch. And residents have saw township vehicle outside the township and. So I mean, you have to be, remember these things can trouble people's.
Right, I, I just.
So, yeah. I mean, I, I just know, once the decals are on, Nathan's going to be getting calls.
And that's fine, there's more calls that I feel.
And I, I want you to keep in mind that I do give the township the utmost respect when I'm driving that vehicle, whether it's marked or not.
And I'm not.
Oh, yeah, that's no question.
So I, and that's the whole spirit of this conversation, I guess at this point in time, chief. Because there is, there may not be a license site specific to an installation of lights and bars and sounds. But I know that historically, we've actually had a myosha issue. And I think it actually also falls into NFPA, that any maintenance, especially when it comes to paid on call and other volunteers. That all lights and sirens have to be installed and maintained by licensed mechanics, so that would be an ASE certification.
Well, maybe what we can, maybe what I can look into, because you set the challenge in my direction and I'll be happy to do that. Obviously, we'll still have a cost to getting the lights and sirens. Maybe, just maybe, I might be able to talk to some of the area mechanics that are licensed mechanics. To see if there would be anybody that we have as a township business. That would be possibly willing to wire those things up for us. At no cost or maybe possibly a donation of some sort. I, I haven't expressed that avenue yet, but what I wanted to do is bring it on the radar that, you know, this is one thing that, you know. I would like to respond on this vehicle as an emergency vehicles as such. It's equipped, it will have everything that I need in it to respond. After hour incidents and different things like that. Now, I, I shot out the door at five nineteen yesterday morning for my residents to the structured fire we had at Grant Street, for example. I couldn't believe how much traffic was on the road at five nineteen in the morning. But, and we're doing fifty-five, when, you know, we could be gaining a little bit better access so I could get there quicker. Not saying that they're all necessary to do that, but that's my goal. And especially, you know, if we leave here, I want my vehicles, my firefighters to be in their vehicles. And I can do a lot of different things, you know, sometimes you can get out ahead of the vehicle, you can get a better size up. Give them more information, there's just some different things that, you know, being mobile like that, that you can do. Or God forbid, there was an accident, I can respond to that, you know, there was an accident, I mean, you probably heard township or one of the ambulances sit on, on, I'm thirty-two the other day. As a courtesy, I almost went out there, because I knew their chief was out of the area, just to do some documentation, take pictures. But I thought, well, you don't step on toes, but after talking about that, they would have loved it if I would have went out there and snapped pictures and. You know, just for liability purposes, so, and they would do the same for me, that's one of those things that I'm getting off track a little bit, but.
So then chief, I guess my suggestion would be to go back and get some pricing, three different quotes for the lights and sirens. And then by then, you'll probably also have those conversations with local entities and have a more comprehensive plan or discussion. No, not on that. On new, item six now?
Item six, our EMS license, we brought that up earlier. It's been a little challenge, you and I filled out the documents, I faxed them all in, and as of this morning. They didn't have anybody at the office to even look at the fax machine, so I just re-scanned them, sent them to various different locations. I have to get administrator rights to be able to go in and change our licensure level. Which I think it might happen a little bit faster now, because I copied a bunch of people on that. And I was reassured that, yes, this will happen quicker. But with COVID, a lot of the state offices are still not going to their office, so. They tell you, you can either email it or fax it, and the quickest thing to do was to fax it and then finding out that there was nobody at that office that's going to receive the fax. Has delayed some stuff, but we're working on that currently, I suspect that will be up to standard here very, very quickly. Any questions on that? Number seven, we've been working and sorting resumes, I had over twenty. I gave Haley a list of candidates, potential candidates yesterday. Calling folks and we're looking at, going to be contacting those individuals to give dates and find out who's available.
Are you interviewing all twenty?
I know, I was asked to narrow down five, I gave Haley six resumes. So in case somebody did back out at the last second, she'd have an additional one to make contact with.
Who's doing the interviews? Nathan, I, and Chief.
Minus cash.
Any questions on that? All right, so inventory, I wanted to share with you. That we are kind of on our way with inventory, now this has been a subject, but one of my firemen, Matt Benedict. Has this, I'm gonna pass this around, because this is kind of a cool thing, that I do not know how to run, he doesn't know how to run it. This is a barcoding, QR coding machine that. We are going to be putting a QR code on anything that has a value of over five hundred dollars. You'll be able to walk up with, as a board member, you'll be able to walk up to that with your cell phone, put on a QR code, go click. And it'll tell you what that is, what truck it's supposed to be on, how much its value is.
This is going into a spreadsheet so that we can delete and add and so on and so forth.
Eventually, so this is his personal machine, and where I'm going with this story. He told me that that machine cost him an hundred eighty dollars to purchase. And with that being said, I think it's a great tool that possibly the township might be interested in. Because we have a lot of things that are valued over five hundred dollars, Nathan had told me that, you know, I have a March third deadline to. Get a inventory in, something that hasn't been done and, well, maybe.
Oh, it wasn't a deadline, that's when the, the timeline started was March third.
That's, that's historic.
That, that clock is still ticking.
So, with, with that being said, this has a media tape that goes in it, which we can buy right down at Kendall Electric. This is where I believe he bought the machine, there's various different companies that do sell this, but, so it's a local township business that we can buy the media. Twenty-one foot of media tape costs thirty bucks, you know, you put a little QR code, you can do a lot of QR codes. But the neat thing about that is once you've got that QR code, if, let's say we have a portable pump out there and it has. An operator's manual, you can put a link to that QR code, so anybody that comes down the road can snap that QR code and go. Oh, there's an operator's manual or owner's manual for this, and it's available online, so we're streamlining paperwork. We don't have to have all these different folders, it'll be right in the QR code, so. Just, just a food for thought, if that's something the township would be interested in, I'm borrowing his at this point in time. And I told him we could provide the media tape if he's willing to donate it, but maybe this board would be interested in. And looking at something like that for our future inventories.
I, I think that it would probably behoove, and I'll actually take point on this, securing three. Prices, because it's not site specific to fire department, we can use this in, in our enterprise fund with the water and throughout every other.
So with, with that said, would we want to, like, would we need one for north side, one for south side, one for water, one for?
No, I'm.
So we could get one.
Kind of like our credit card, go check it out at the clerk's office.
I, I'll, I'll bring three prices to the next meeting, because it is something that would be.
It's an excellent idea.
Yep, so. It would, yeah, but I'll still secure three.
And a lot, and along with my inventory on item number eight, this is a continuance of this. We have started efforts on that, each truck, the guys have pulled out all the supplies, we're in the process. We've done a major cleaning back in the storage room back there to streamline and get rid of some of the old junk. So we can actually go through and getting a proper inventory, so we're working on that. And along with inventory, we just acquired from the Department of Natural Resources, a new enclosed trailer. To be able to carry our Claris Ranger side by side in, that was free of charge. We went down to Lansing to pick that up and it's out back. So when you want to come out and take a look at the vehicle for the chief, that trailer's there and I'd be happy to show you that as well. Got a little bit of work, none of these things are new, so they, they all involve a little bit of elbow grease. Any questions on inventory?
The back looks great, the organization of the back.
We, we filled the dumpster. Also, number nine on my list, countywide radio pager purchase, I spoke with Mr. Hall. That's on a hold right now, they haven't had every department buy in or they're waiting for to get that information from other departments. So that was board action here, the last meeting that I was at to purchase pagers up to two thousand dollars. I'm just waiting for that to happen at this point. And I believe. Only with the risk control manager, we're working on our way, I've got a couple other departments and chiefs that are helping. Me gather information for SOP, SOGs, it's going to be a matter of, you know, I, Gers Township gentleman I know over there. He has a very similar situation to our township and how they respond, I'm getting help from him. So we're starting to compile that and one other thing with the risk control, we are looking into a grant. I've got Jim Bolonowski working on this with the participating plant grant. And they are looking to install emergency lighting activations on each side of the north station here. So if they go out the door for a fire, it'll be a red flashing light to alert traffic. Because pulling out of here, you've probably found this to be yourself, very difficult, but pulling out in a five hundred and fifty thousand.
Chief Hanson, I would start that before you even put one keystroke to the power plan fillable form. As to MDOT's approval of, because they actually removed the hard sign. And it was a battle just to get a four by four back on the ground, saying that there was a fire department here.
Right, so Mr. Bolonowski's working on that end of it, I had set him with that task and. I'm not sure how that's gonna go, but that, that was the vision of the full timers that they thought it was, be very critical. I'm not sure how that's gonna go, but that, that was the vision of the full timers that they thought it was, be very critical. If they could get something for this station in particular, because of the high speed traffic.
Mark, I would also highly recommend or encourage you to go out to not only the, the power plant part, but you know, like Matt, like Nathan said with all the, proper procedures, but also to the community foundation, CFNEM dot O R G.
Actually, I have a meeting with Mr. Hagerty.
Excellent, excellent.
Perfect. Uh, that's all I have for you today, unless you need something, Mr. Paul.
One, my standard question, how's the plan coming?
The, the plan is working pretty well. I mean, uh, getting everything in place as far as starting to work on policies and procedures. We've been making baby steps in every, uh, department, uh, that we're working on. I would really like to get with the equipment committee, we'll, we'll, I'll make contact on that. That would be part of a plan of what we're gonna do with the ambulances and different things like that and get started. Because whatever we get isn't gonna happen overnight, just such as turnout gears, a six month waiting list just to get our turnout gear. So if we get a new firefighter on, we have to either rent gear or wait six months to equip them.
I have a gear question. I mean, I know we, last meeting, we, um, approved to dispose of the two turnout gears. And I guess I'm wondering why we're selling them for half the price we paid for them and then gonna turn around and pay double what we're getting for them. But why don't we keep them so that we can? I mean, they're still.
They're custom fit. Uh, they're not that custom.
They're not that custom fit. Uh, so I don't understand why we would get rid of them. Why don't we just ask for them back? Because we have two sets of complete turnout gear that we could possibly outfit some paid on calls or somebody working in the department.
I, I guess at this point, I would point that finger back to this board, because that's something I didn't have any, any say in or any affiliation with that at that time. But I'm not sure what arrangements were made. I mean, I'm willing to carry out whatever assignment you guys give me, if you want me to.
It wasn't an assignment that was given to you, it was actually me. And so then the board said, recoup what we can, and they were a year, nearly a year by the time those two individuals went. Uh, and I don't know what the life expectancy of, by NFPA standards is for PPE now.
Ten years.
Um, so.
So we probably have like six years out of those yet?
You tell me what, cause I already have a, a verbal agreement by, uh, that they will purchase, uh, for a, a price. Um, but if it's the wish of the board not to sell it, then make it known now.
Do, don't we have several, uh, turnout gear in the back now? Last time I was there, there were several.
Uh, we do, and quite frankly, they're all out of date.
Okay.
So they've saved them. Uh, my gear was on a date in two thousand and seven.
So getting to the, the primary point with turnout gear is we purchased ten new sets.
Right.
That are basically unaccounted for.
Yeah.
Henceforth, I've been asking for, uh, an inventory since March third, because when you look at twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars a set, and these are held by paid on call, but are not responding and they're not been returned. That is actually my consideration and.
Yeah.
And I'm not so.
It's what the ad hoc committee.
Well, we know where two of them are. We know where two are.
Two are. Well, the outside of that.
And I, uh, I'm currently working on that list of folks that are there. And now that I've got a month here, we've had a couple training meetings. We have another training meeting coming up where we're doing a live fire burn. I want to see who all shows up, who all brings their gear. Cause as we've had a meeting and as people have been there, I've had, uh, Matt Benedict doing, uh, dates and sizes on each individual. So we, we are gathering, uh, short of me requiring somebody to come to this office and bring me their stuff. Uh, and I, and I, and it might come to that, because I know it's township property and I need the inventory. Uh, so as I'm going down this list, uh, I have a core group that's here all the time for everything. Those that are not, I'm working on that list to try and.
That, that list already exists. So that list was established during the ad hoc committee meetings. And I think Chris Stevens will have that list.
Okay.
And there was a list of people that were active. There were a list of people that were sort of seeing what's, what the plan is and then there was.
Right. And I think, yeah, Mr. Lappin, I think if we, if we get this committee together sooner than later, that's something we could probably hammer out at that committee, if you would agree.
I agree.
Uh, and I will entertain that the first available date that I have on my calendar and I'll, I'll have Michelle with my dates and she can contact probably the rest of yous, uh, and we'll go from there or.
Steve.
Right.
Cause we're here.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I'm up front, uh, I don't know, twenty, thirty times a day. So if I don't know, I usually come up and bug any one of the three of them about something.
He calls it up front, but he's actually walking to the back to see if Andy. But I do think, I mean, if it has to be that it's required that you bring it in so we can check it in, account for it, we can move on from it. But we need to know where the stuff is.
And one thing I'd point to is that, that, you know, we're talking about turnout gear that's up to date or out of date. We probably have more liability sending a firefighter into anything without a date gear than we ever will have of us wiring up little lights and sirens on a vehicle, just saying. Okay, that's where, that's where our real trouble will come.
Actually, on all fronts and we'll take them all seriously, but I do, I do agree when you're dealing with live fire, PPE is the first and foremost.
Thank you, thank you very much for your time. If you have any questions, my door is always open, my phone number, you know how to get ahold of me.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, you know, I just want to add one more thing. I have the unfortunate need to call nine one one in the last couple of weeks. And Chief Hanson and one of our paid on calls who was covering a twenty-four hour shift came, they were wonderful. They calmed down the person who was upset till the city got there. I had a great experience and you're. Awesome. Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you very much. Uh, Kath isn't with us any longer. So, cause we went a little further, but, uh, the water department, uh, operating report for July, uh, is in, uh, your packets. Um, I suppose if you have any questions, uh, we can address them at next month's meeting. Um, cause she was online, she probably had to go, cause time has been slipping, so.
If you have anything to add.
I think we are, we covered the amp.
Like Brody, let's, I mean, if there's questions, you can go back there.
Okay.
There's nothing.
Okay, beautiful. Okay.
My motion.
Uh, not, yes, yeah, so, oh, okay. Thank you very much, Chief. Um, uh, at this point in time, uh, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that the township board enter into a closed session in order to discuss settlement strategy with the city of Alpine Water and Sewer litigation and to consider a written confidential legal opinion from the township's attorneys.
Done it. We have a motion on the table. Is there support or it's been moved and supported? Any, uh, further discussion? Seeing them all, actually a roll call.
Treasurer Ellery Summers?
Yes.
Trustee Reiner, here. Um, trustee Polley?
Yes.
Trustee Lappin?
Yes.
Clark Lavich, yes, supervisor Skibby?
Yes.
And that's at twelve fifty-eight.